Good evening and welcome to the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, September 25th, 2013 at 6:00 PM. Is this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Dito.
Here.
Eliza.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Lumberger.
Here.
Saginaw.
Here.
Weedenhoff.
Here.
Next we have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our students to come up and stand before us and lead us. Our students tonight are from Merrill Middle School.
Merrill Elementary. We promoted them quickly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you go to your seats, actually.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have Board Administrative Reports. And as the Board President, I have no specific agenda items to report. Superintendent?
Yes, this evening I have several reports, Mr. President, for good news for this week on September 25th. Interesting, wonderful event that is about a three-year-old tradition now, I believe, at Ashkosh North High School, that on September 13th, teachers were honored as on the Most Influential Teacher Night. Senior students and the football team chose teachers who they felt were influential in their lives from kindergarten through 12th grade. And prior to the game, teachers were given a T-shirt with a number on the sleeve of their player and who had selected them. The front of the T-shirt read, "I made a difference in the life of a Spartan," and on the back it read, "2013 Senior Choice Award." Teachers were announced prior to the game, along with the players. A photograph was taken and will be added later date. The players will deliver the framed photograph to the teacher's classroom. The program was started about three years ago with the head coach, Chris Kuata. It was turned out that it was really a special honor for those teachers, but also for the football players. Having the privilege of being there with the teachers and the football players, the wonderful conversation between players who had not actually, in some cases, had a teacher for a number of years, made the teachers really be in shock that they made a difference earlier in their lives, along with teachers who are currently their teachers. What a wonderful way to honor teachers and to have our senior players being truly excited about their past, their educational experience. Merrill Middle School news. Huge thank you to Dick Guretzmacher and Bob Merrill for work done to repaint and install the Merrill Middle School awning. These efforts to refinish, rather than purchase new, and the money that saving effort on part of the Ashkosh School District Maintenance Department on a daily basis. If you've, with the renovation work that's been going on at that building, if you've not driven by lightly, it is really refreshing to see the exterior improve on both middle and middle school and elementary. Merrill Middle School students beautified the grounds in preparation for the open house. A Merrill thank you to Shusane Luus, Roxy O'Mary, and Susan McElrath for working with her students on a positive impact of Merrill and the school community. We're very proud of them. Merrill Middle School, thank you to Dr. Bruce Nindoff, who donated 600 board feet of butternut to the Merrill Middle Schools Technology and Engineering Program. The wood is being used to complete projects designed using Autodesk Inventor. Butternut is a favorite wood for students to use that is similar to oak, but is much softer and easier to work with. And thank you to Dr. Nindoff for that donation. Trager Tales. Bergstrom Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Ashkosh located on Jackson Street helped raise $660 for Trager, Carl Trager Elementary School with Chrysler brand Drive for Kids program. Joseph Loftus, General Manager, Bergstrom Chrysler Dodge Ram of Ashkosh, Drive for Kids allowed the opportunity to work together for kids. Everyone has had a great time. Participants earn $10 for Carl Trager for every test drive they took during the registration period. Since 1993, Chrysler introduced the Drive for Kids. Chrysler dealers have worked with parents and educators across the nation. Chrysler has contributed nearly $5 million directly to local schools for student needs from playgrounds and field trips and reading programs and new computers. Carl Trager Elementary is putting the money into a technology fund for new iPads for students. And the Ashkosh partners with Fox Valley Technical implement the IT Pathway Curriculum. The Ashkosh Area School District is pleased to announce a new partnership with Fox Valley Technical College. Both Ashkosh North and Ashkosh West will be implementing an IT Career Pathway with the Business Education Department. Fox Valley Tech is committing funds of $150,000 over the next three years to have several transcribed courses in the IT area offered in the high schools. And they are funding the Fox Valley Technical College instructor to help implement and teach the IT curriculum. The IT Pathways will be the first of its kind in the area and can potentially serve as a model for other districts. Students completing the IT Pathway, if either high school can earn IT certifications, Fox Valley Technical College transcripted credits, that will lead them to earning a two-year IT degree. We have a special thank you to Doug Waterman, Anne Hobraken, Glenn Osborne from Fox Valley Tech, and Scott Kreminger, Robert Ben Holden, the Business Ed Department, and Jerry Johnson and Chris Apps from the Technology Department and Engineering Department for getting this conversation started. It's one of those, although we did not identify it with the proper logo, it's again one of those demonstrations of increased partnerships with higher ed and the community. And then lastly, you'll find a number of issues of listed activities for the superintendent in the last two-week period. That completes the report, Mr. President.
All right. As far as the listening session goes, I don't believe we had anyone at the last one.
No.
Was there any action steps from a previous listening session?
There would not be that we've had two months now without guests. We need to do some more promoting. Other reports?
I have Facilities and Finance. We met on September 19th. We started with a presentation by Oliver Shinkton, who was a teacher at North with the Communities Program. And he brought two students with him, and they are going to be building a hoop-designed aquaponics house. I'm not sure what the building is actually called, but yeah. They plan to stock the tanks with fish, and then they will use the foam on the top to plant whatever, arugula or herbs or whatever. They have done a ton of research. They've attended, I think there was an aquaponics conference somewhere that they attended. They're in touch with the professor, a professor who has taken aquaponics to a mega scale and has actually succeeded and made money with it. So they're in touch with him. They have gotten all of the funding for the initial build, so none of that is going to be coming out of our budget. So what the Facilities and Finance Committee, first of all, they wanted to know, can they continue forward? Should they go ahead and continue? We said absolutely, that we would support you. We asked for a few more things, like some kind of an income statement to let us know, you know, what are the expectations once you get up and running? They have to finalize their plot plan and some other plans with both the district and the city. And then we asked them to link this specific project to STEM initiatives in our district to kind of tie all those pieces together, as well as link it to our strategic plan so that, you know, this doesn't die when people who are so excited about it start it, it will then have some longevity. That was really exciting. Then we talked about the Oplon spending. The update is we have $257,000 remaining in the budget. We probably have one more change order, maybe another five grand. Essentially, that money's going to stay in that account for the next year for any unexpected, you know, changes as we need to maybe make tweaks to the building. So we have another year before we decide what to do with the money. They will have a grand opening. It's planned for the last Sunday in October, and the state superintendent, along with the mayor of Ashkosh, will be in attendance. And then the last thing that we did was, we went through a series of question and answers just with the proposed budget. The questions will eventually be answered, and that information will be coming back from Sue once she has done all the research and she gets it back to us. Let's see. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 17th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Other reports? Mr. Dito.
Policy and Governance met. We went over a few items. We had a discussion about affirmative action policy. We're going to be taking a look at this. Mike Knopf and John Lumberger are going to be returning at a future meeting with a potential policy draft of that. We looked at some changes in WIAA, what they're proposing on things. We'll be looking at that too in a future meeting. We have a couple on this evening's agenda. Policy 331, Parent Rights and Curriculum. This was pointed out by our WASB quick review, which again, I applaud the board for their initiative on having WASB review our policies because they haven't been reviewed for quite a long time, and obviously they caught some things there. Parent Rights and Curriculum, the addition of language around parent legal guardians rights, review surveys, and the other instrument used to collect personal student information, and also the addition of a protection of student privacy in the statement that personal information collected will not be disclosed or sold, which are obviously both good things. The committee recommended passage of that, and that is on our agenda this evening. Also, Policy 342.1, Programs for Children with Disabilities. The primary changes were updates as reflecting the changes in federal and state regulations, just to be in compliance with that. That has also been recommended by committee for approval. We reviewed where we're at with the WASB quick review spreadsheet at our meeting that we just had. Items on the spreadsheet listed that mandated, as mandated, were scheduled for the next four months of policy and governance meetings. So I don't know if you saw the agenda, but I was looking at October's here, it's like about 15 policies are going to be reviewed, and so we have our work coming up for us over the next few months on that. And that's it for Policy and Governance.
Thank you. Any other committees? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to non-agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on an item which is not on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing none, we will move to agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to come before us tonight and speak on an agenda-related Again, seeing none, we will proceed to Consent Resolution Agenda. Number 8A has already been pulled, number 11 has been pulled, and number 13.
Can we pull number 14 as well?
And number 14? Anything else? Anyone want to pull?
Could you, again, Matt, on the...
8A, 11, 13, and 14. Consent Resolution Agenda. For the Consent Agenda, the Board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote, without discussion. If a Board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. The Board will consider approval of minutes of special board meeting on August 20th, 2013. Number two, minutes of special board meeting executive session on August 20th, 2013. Number three, minutes of special board meeting on August 28th, 2013. Number four, minutes of special, of regular board meeting, excuse me, on August 28th, 2013. Number five, minutes of regular board meeting on September 11th, 2013. Number six, minutes of executive session on September 11th, 2013. Seven, bills payable. Nine, 2013, 2014 Ashkosh Area School District budget. Ten, 2013, 2014 Recreation Department budget. And 12, pupil nondiscrimination self-evaluation report. And 15, updates to Policy 331, Parent Rights and the Curriculum. And 16, updates to Policy 342.1, Programs for Children with Disabilities. So move. Second. Call the roll.
Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Weedenhoff?
Aye.
Weedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliza?
Aye.
Eliza, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Motion to adjourn.
All right. Next, we will go to Resolution Number Eight. Be resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the appointments, temporary appointments, change of assignments, reassignments, or, excuse me, resignations, retirement, and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I had several questions related to that particular item. I noted, for example, that this resolution includes the appointment of a new principal at Jacob Shapiro Elementary School, someone I've known for a long time. Actually, it's the Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Instruction Laboratory School, as it is a charter school in that sort of official name. What I missed in the report was the salary for that individual and whether or not it's a one-year or a two-year contract.
All right. The contract is from, I think she's starting this week through June 30th of '14. So it's a one-year contract essentially. The salary is, we have ranges for the administrators, salary ranges, and this particular situation, the person's at the bottom of the range, which I think was 85, 680, something of that nature. So. Can I answer your question?
I answered my question on that one. Thank you. Then I had a question on another one. It's the CLC Learning Center Director?
Yes. That's a 21st Century Grant.
Okay.
That Julie Dunkey wrote for the district. It's, I'll check it out in my memory here now. Was it $500,000 for five years? It's a substantial amount of money. I don't know if anybody else knows that situation. Anyway, the CLT, Community Learning Center, this person's going to oversee this program at Ashkosh North High School. There's going to be a couple of subpositions with it. Basically, it's a program to help students who want more assistance after school, literacy, math, different type of programs, and it's not always these specific academics from the high school, but to enrich their educational opportunities. We also have a Community Learning Center, 21st Century Grant program, I believe, at Merrill L and at E. Crook, I believe, two elementary schools. So.
And I think at Webster in Washington. Those are all CLC grants.
Is that the lighted schoolhouse?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I didn't, sorry, I didn't catch the... And then I think there was some reference to this being a five-year grant. Are we just approving a one-year appointment, or are we approving a five-year appointment?
That's a good question.
Five-year appointments are a little bit unusual.
Well, in this case, now, this person that we're bringing in, we're not bringing in under a contract.
Okay.
So basically, it's in that will-type position.
Okay.
So if the person does well, we just keep it continuing for the life of the grant.
Okay. I'm sorry that I need to mention a person rather than a position. Julie Dunkey was one you mentioned who had helped write this grant. What's the relationship between this program and the work that Julie does at North High School?
With communities, schools, or whatever. I don't think there is a connection there, but I can answer that for sure.
But she has to be the grant writer or one of the leads on it.
Yes, I think so.
Thank you. I appreciate your answers, Mr. Merrill.
Saginaw?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Weedenhoff?
Aye.
Weedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliza?
Aye.
Eliza, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Motion to adjourn.
Resolution?
I asked to have this pulled primarily, in fact, the only reason is that I will be abstaining on it as I have connections with the theatrical stage employees.
And I had asked to have it pulled for a different reason, because I'm not a member of that bargaining unit. First of all, I thought it was a concise, well-written report, and secondly, I noticed that the practice on writing staff reports includes Roman numeral four, which has to do with district goals and mission statement and so on. As a newcomer, I would find it helpful, as well as more transparent, to know which part of the mission statement, the vision statement, the strategic goals, any staff report is relating to. Providing the entire mission statement and vision statement doesn't really convey much. So I may be the only Board member who feels that way, but it would help me to know which part of those or parts of those documents that are found in Board policy would fit the particular topic under discussion and are covered in the staff report.
So noted.
Thank you.
Was that your only comment about it?
Yes, I liked the report.
All right.
Concise and to the point.
So basically, I guess the direction to administration is if you can point out in the resolution which portion you're actually referring to.
Or in the staff report itself.
Right.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Weedenhoff?
Aye.
Weedenhoff, aye. Dito?
Abstain.
Dito, abstain. Eliza?
Aye.
Eliza, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Motion to adjourn.
Resolution Number 13. Be resolved that the Ashkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the Community Teen Screen Program and authorize execution of required agreements pertaining to program operation as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So move. Second. All right. I actually asked to have this one pulled. We've had a fair amount of emails coming into us about it, mostly from people who are out of state. But I had raised, I guess, a question about it one of the few last time about the fact that it showed a 30% positive for its screening when we, even in Winnebago County, where it's expected to be a higher rate. We had, I believe, a rate of 16. And so I guess I do have some concerns about it still in that regard, and if anything, I guess the emails that we received do make me want to find out what they're talking about. If there is something else that we, some other knowledge or piece that we need to know, I would prefer that we knew it before we voted. And so finding out something about what happened to it at Columbia and other such things, I would be willing to wait on this vote if we don't have that information tonight. But I would like to know basically what they're referring to in terms of Columbia dropping the whole thing. Personally, I am not real concerned with the idea that we're going to be introducing the idea of suicide to people who are in ninth grade. I can't imagine that any of our ninth-grade students would not have heard that term or would not have, would not know what that term means.
Right.
I certainly did by the time I was in ninth grade.
Right.
So I'm not real concerned about that, nor am I really concerned about the idea that this could potentially open up avenues that they may not have thought of before or the idea that we're somehow going to be, that the questions are somehow going to describe exactly how to perform, you know, a certain type of suicide. I can't imagine that the questions, at least from what we had in the brochure from last time, even go into something like that. But I guess if we could hear more about the Columbia University problems and what we've seen, I guess more about what we've also seen, how long it's been going in Appleton and other area communities, and if they've actually seen any negative results.
So the Columbia University started the program in 1991, and it was a nonprofit within Columbia University that had its own private funding. So what I have been told was that the private funding no longer existed, and that is why the National Teen Screen at Columbia University closed its doors. That is the answer that I've been given to that question, because I too have sought that answer. And the other question was about...
So the idea in this, for those of you who may not know, we've received emails from people who are in New York and Massachusetts and Florida.
Florida, Texas, California.
Yeah, Texas and Cal, all kinds of other states telling us that this is, that this program is nonsense and we should do away with it. But they failed to give really any specific details, other than that they hinted that there was something else wrong at Columbia University and that these people were fired from Columbia University.
That's not my understanding. I do know what you're referring to in the article where it talked about it was a personnel issue. Columbia University is a private university, and when we were first having interactions with Mr. Kramer a couple of years ago at another school, and I contacted Columbia University to get their guidance on how to handle the situation, at that time, they were not making any comments to Mr. Kramer because they didn't have to, because they were a private entity, and so that's how they were advised to handle that situation. Like you mentioned, Mr. Kramer says that this is a horrible tool and it should be done away with. And when you look further into the background from which he speaks, it has to do with abolishing all of psychiatry, all of mental health therapy, all of counseling, all of everything. He has an understanding that it is brainwashing, for lack of a better word, and so I don't know if that helps.
It does. I guess I more or less knew that from the emails that we've seen so far.
Yeah.
So I was hoping that maybe there was something else that would be drawn to light. Can you give us any more information? I know we discussed it at some length last time about the other school districts in our area that are using it.
Yeah. There is, we're working with Cocona for its third year. We're in the Appleton Area School District for its second year, and we are going to be in Kimberly Area School District for its first year, starting in the spring. So these schools have had also news press, but somehow did not get into the shining light, as Ashkosh Area School District has unfortunately, in regards to the attention from out of state.
And with Cocona, I guess, being the longest-running in three years, that's still a pretty short track record.
For our program, Fond du Lac's been doing this since 2001. They've been using Teen Screen since 2001, and they have decades of records about the implementation, the impact, the improvement.
But they don't have too many decades. It's only been around since 92.
Okay. So I stand corrected. They have a lot of information about statistics and consent rates and positive rates and referral rates and that information.
I guess, if we could, since we're doing this publicly, can we just confirm with you that the aim of Teen Screen is to get children onto pharmaceutical drugs? Is that the goal?
That is not the goal.
Okay. Is the goal to fund therapy and psychiatric practices in this area?
That is not the goal.
Okay. What was the third allegation? Oh, that it increases, and it increases suicidal ideation in children.
And we know that to be a myth because?
I have documentation from the American, let me get it out here so I've had it correct. American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And I would be happy to make copies and give this to you, but it talks about the fact that for people who are suicidal, they're suicidal, and for people who are not suicidal, talking about suicide isn't going to introduce the idea of committing suicide or completing suicide. The risk really falls in not asking the question, because it's those kids and those people who are suffering silently due to stigma or fear that don't speak out, and so when we don't ask the question, that's where we get into, into dangerous territory.
Obviously, I guess we should also state, I think again, that this is a voluntary action.
And parental consent?
Parental consent.
With parental consent, yeah.
And completely confidential from the schools. Everything we do is kept completely separate from any academic records, and it's free and it's voluntary, so nobody has to do anything.
Mr. Dito?
I guess I took this from a different angle. I looked at, reviewed our policies, policy four fifty-six, suicide prevention intervention and post-suicide intervention. The opening line in our current policy, which has been around, I believe, since nineteen ninety, shall be the policy, the Oshkosh area school district to provide educational leadership and assistance to the community in dealing with significant social concern presented by teenage suicide. Following that up was rule number one, which I thought had played into some of the emails that I received from people from out of state. Talks about the actual intervention process within our policy and rule, that staff, parents, guardians, and students should be asked to share their concerns. It talks about determining whether the student's concept of the world is that, is that a worthless, hopeless place? And it, the one that really kind of struck me in regards to some of the emails, they're saying right here, and this is from what I can tell, our policy, this has been around, adopted nineteen eighty-eight, revised in nineteen ninety. Don't be afraid to talk about it. Ask, what do you think about suicide? Have you ever, ever talked to anyone about it? Why not? Do you think that you could talk to somebody about it? The situation is hopeful if the student can talk about it. The situation is serious if the student doesn't talk to anyone about it. And I guess what I got from that in my own way, that to have an avenue to allow, on a voluntary basis, if somebody wants to talk about something, I just, I'm sorry, I don't see the downside.
If I could, I'd just like to say in regard to that, we actually updated that just about eight months ago or so. And I'm sorry if it's not from the website yet, but I think through policy and governance, we actually updated that, it made it more current, but the statements you made are still there, and I want to emphasize to every, for everyone, that students at all levels have, are invited by counselors and social workers, school psychologists to do it, as Mr. Dito read, about coming in to talk if you have concerns, or there are things you don't want to talk to anybody else about, you can talk to me, and it's, I mean, their, their work, especially counselors and, and social workers are all protected by student provider privilege, so their notes are not available for me or anyone else to, and we only, they only say something if, if somebody is, you know, really expressing that, you know, they say things that cause us to think they might consider attempting suicide.
This was a very, very interesting topic and one that I found touching personally. It brought up some some, some deep feelings that were created about twenty years ago when my cousin's daughter chose to take her life. Interacting with the grandparents, my aunt and uncle, and the parents was, and continues to be, a challenge. One of the most horrible things I think any parent would face would be the loss of a child. And so I have confidence in this board, and I have confidence in the group that put this recommendation together, that they would not come forward with a recommendation to this board that would in, in any way harm a child or put them in the same situation that my uncle and aunt and my cousin and his wife found themselves in about twenty years ago. I also found a reference on, on the web relative to the American Medical Association, saying exactly what you had said, that talking about suicide doesn't increase the incidence of, of that. Talking in terms of the, the schools. I also like the fact that this is, it has, to me, it has so many points of entry or exit in terms of parents deciding, yes, they want their child to do this, no, they don't. They have the child do it, they don't like the results, that doesn't mean they have to follow through.
That's right.
They can follow through in some ways, but, but not others, so I, I have enough faith in, in the people who put this together and the people around this table to believe that none of us would do anything knowingly to hurt any one of the ten thousand plus children in this school district, and we're talking about actually less than that, because you were talking about a grade level, I believe, ninth grade, so we're talking about maybe eight hundred children. Eight hundred children is still eight hundred children, and that's an important number, but I, I, I have confidence in the people who put this together and in the wisdom of the board.
Thank you.
Knowing that, I mean, I guess, let me ask this a different way, if there is someone who takes this and does test positive, and the parents, you know, don't know what to do at that point, what action is then taken by your group, I guess, one, you know, let's, let's suppose that it is a false positive, that this person really isn't someone who's likely to be a candidate for suicide, but the test shows that they are, and the parents are concerned, and, and they turn to the district and to you for advice.
So let me walk you through the process. When a student screens positive on the computerized portion, it's a two-step process, so we meet with every student afterward to go over the results of the screen, and if a student screens positive, we have our licensed clinician meet with that student to go over what came up on the computerized screen to determine if it is a true positive or a false positive. So the clinician determines whether or not what came up on the screen needs further evaluation. So if the clinician determines that the student would benefit from further evaluation, they make that recommendation, and then we have case management that follows that family by providing them with different resources in the community that they can connect with, connect with if they so choose, and then we follow up with that family through three completed appointments with that resource referral, or up to ninety days. So we follow those families to ensure that they do get connected, or that they make a good connection, or that they can navigate the insurance system, or the healthcare system, or whatever the case may be, and help them to make sure that their student does receive the help, if they want it. If they choose not to, we've given them the information that we have, and that's, then they have that information to do with, what they choose to do with it.
And I guess the avenues for help are psychiatry as well?
If a family wanted to do that, but we know just of resources in the community of providers. We often talk to primary care physicians if that's what the family chooses. We just provide different resources. Telling the family what the recommendation is, finding out what the family would like, how we can help them, and then, like I mentioned prior to coming into a community to do screening, we have a whole host of resources that we have networked with and have memorandums of understanding, so that we can ensure that that student gets connected.
Is the, when you, I guess, when you say there's a recommendation, is there a recommendation then for something within, you know, you've got a category of opportunities?
It's just a recommendation for further evaluation, that's all.
And they can pick whatever program, they give them a list?
Any kind of evaluation.
You give them the list and it's up to them at that point?
Exactly. Yep, we don't do any diagnosing.
It's not a referral to a psychiatrist or anything else?
No. We don't do any diagnosing. We don't recommend any particular type of treatment. We simply have resources that we can share with the family, so they can make a, a choice if they would like.
So because there's no diagnosis, then at that point, what is stated in the majority of those emails regarding labeling is actually completely false?
Correct.
All right. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, call the roll.
Wimhaw?
Aye.
Wimhaw, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Hursak?
Aye.
Hursak, aye. Limberger?
Aye.
Limberger, aye. Saganek?
Aye.
Saganek, aye. Walsh and Perry.
Resolution number fourteen, thank you very much, by the way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
For coming and being with us tonight. Be resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the five-year contract renewal for ALPS as filed with secretary to the board of education.
Remove.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I wanted this pulled just to talk about it again, and maybe throw some ideas out there or hash some of this out. I, I'm worried about ALPS. I was worried about it two years ago, and with the decline in enrollment, I'm even more worried. And Julie's email back was, we're going to re-energize ALPS. Your answers were great. Thank you so much for, for answering those questions. So really, the big, the biggest concern is, how do we, how do we grow? How do we grow ALPS? What's the best way to do that? You know, of course, we're happy to help, we're happy to support it. If you want to continue it as a charter, then I'm sure that's something that, that we can do. Or is there other options? And so, you know, having no time to actually talk about this before the meeting, I don't mean to wing it right now, but, you know, let's, before we, before we go on it.
No, I agree. I had a chance to read some of the emails, but not all of them. They were occurring today, so we are looking for your input this evening.
Well, I guess, you know, basically from the report, Allison had sent just some general questions, so it may be easiest to kind of go down the list to just kind of talk about. Allison had some questions about the enrollment and the decline, and yes, we are at a declining point at this point. Some kind of those hidden factors with that. When we look at staffing ALPS, we want to make sure that we are filling the classrooms to capacity to justify the cost of a teacher inside the classroom, because as we are aware, we want to be budget savvy and we want to save money where we are at. So this past year, we had to move to just offering ALPS for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. When we looked at the enrollment coming in, what we are facing within the district is students in fifth grade don't want to come over to transition at the fifth grade year, because they finally made it through elementary school. They are with their friends, they are excited, they are now the big, big man on campus. So we will get the interest, and every student that comes loves the atmosphere and the setting. But to them, it's that leap of faith, so to speak, of I'm leaving my home school now for the last five years to this place, which is also very small, and then comes up with, well, what if I don't know enough people in my class? And you have that social piece, which we will later address with that as well, too. So we're finding that in sixth grade, we're getting more students wanting to come, because they're already making that transition to a middle school. So when we were looking at those pieces, we really want to look at our marketing for our third, fourth, and fifth graders, where maybe they haven't created such a strong connection in their home school, or maybe they're more willing to take that chance to say, I want to build that community within this school setting. So Sue Warzac, the secretary, today, we were running a couple of reports, and there are two thousand three hundred and thirty-one third, fourth, and fifth graders within our school district, and we pulled that on Skyward and using some of the census numbers. So a quick, not a quick way, but as we look at what can we do to market ALPS better, which I think is really turning into more of a marketing issue than ALPS being the issue.
Sure.
We're offering a high-quality program. We just need to market that better. So we will have a personalized letter, just explaining why you would want to come to ALPS, some of the great things that we're offering. And then in the dissemination year, we had a lot of brochures printed, so each family or each student would be receiving that in the mail. So that would be one way to get direct information to students. We do have our website out there. Kim and I were talking today of what else we can do to maybe put some other key pieces of information on there to jazz it up a little bit.
And even an enrollment type, or an interest form, so we know who is interested in the program up there.
So as that rolls out, we probably will have students wanting to come visit, so what we may end up doing is setting specific days.
There you go.
Come on in and see ALPS, kind of a workshop, field trip model, to do that piece. The next venue we can explore to kind of tap would be looking within our teachers within the school district. So we have videos that were also made, so we're looking at sending a copy at each school, so teachers would have time to view that. And the last I checked, I believe it was on our website as well.
Okay.
But then also sending them that letter and that brochure and saying, you know, do you have that self-motivated student who, whatever you put in front of them, they are voracious at the reading or going through those pieces, because we really would like to help. So we have that aspect, and then at the next level, looking at administrator meetings, to just say, don't forget about this as an option. So I definitely agree with the marketing piece of working on that more. Because initially what happened is there were so many students applying, there was a lottery, and there were tears shed, and not everybody was able to get in, so you don't want to create an exclusive school where that's an issue either.
I guess ALPS isn't that old of a program with us, right?
Ten years. Ten years.
Okay, and I guess, other than marketing, when I read Allison's email this morning, which mentioned some of the goals that weren't met, my first thought was, well, you know, has this run its course? Is this something that, you know, there are lots of programs that come out, they're very successful in the first few years, and then they sort of trickle off, and they never really regain their success. Are we looking like, at something like that?
I don't see that. The, the hard part with the test scores is, we all know that the WKCE is a one-shot measure. And when you look at a small sample size, which we have at ALPS, one student can account for twelve percent. So when you look at, we didn't meet our one hundred percent goal, we were at eighty-eight percent. It equates to one student. So when you look at the sample size and how much percent each student accounts for, it's a little misleading with the information. But you also have to look at the other numbers included. When you look at the state average, we are almost double that. You know, so even though we are not at that one hundred percent, it's still very close. And like I shared in that last statement of, that's what makes ALPS unique and special, where we already knew where those students may have been struggling, and when you miss the cut score by two points on the WKCE from being basic to proficient, it's not a red flag, because we have other data measures in place to show that growth has been occurring as well.
When ALPS was created, I know that they were able to attract students from other districts. Not, I don't know about homeschoolers, but anyway, students who had not been attending any Oshkosh area school district school, and that was part of the justification for continuing it, and it was, it was great. It was great impetus, success built success. And so the success of having students coming in who weren't in any of the schools brought in a lot of funding with them, which allowed them to grow the program, and then everybody benefited. I just have a couple of demographic questions. Do you, offhand, I don't necessarily know that you'll know this answer, do you know what the percentage of pre-introduced lunch students in that program?
I believe it's like fourteen point six.
Fourteen point six, which I'm guessing is well below the district average?
Yes.
And the state average?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and do we have any second language learners in this program, or any students of color who attend this program?
Yes.
Minority students? Thank you.
Well, okay, so to just summarize, because I think that you've answered all these questions beautifully, thank you. The first thing that comes up is, and I don't want to micromanage, but maybe changing the goals, but that's, that's a different thing. That if we're not going to do a hundred percent, which, like you said, one student's going to throw the whole number off to eighty-eight, and now we've not met our goal.
The hard part with one hundred percent, ultimately, that's what we want, and if you look at the six, well, all of the data previously to this year has been a hundred percent.
Well, then they change the bar.
Yeah, and had they not changed the bar? Yeah, and had they not changed the bar, we would still be at 100 percent, so that's where that adjustment comes in.
Well, didn't the one student miss it by two points or something?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then the second question is then, is the charter the best way to set it up? Because by definition, the charter has to take anybody that applies up until they reach their maximum enrollment, and then it's a lottery. And, and if the goal is to target a certain segment of students, which was part of what was in the report, that it was the at-risk, gifted, and talented, then is there a different way we can set it up so we can really focus on those kids? Less tiers, right, then you don't get the kids that probably wouldn't be able to succeed there. And we can really focus our energies that way, I don't know, but I just feel like charter is a big basket, and
Well, we're no longer getting funding for this, right?
That's the other thing, is that the charter originally was for the money, I get that.
Right, so at this point, there's no
Could we change it? And is there a better way to do it?
And, and what I would suggest is that as we explore in our goal five of the strategic plan, we have the process set in place to explore options, including magnet school options that could be identified. And a spinoff to the ALPS program could be one of the results relating to that.
So we'll renew the contract this year, we'll explore all the other options and come back at it. Okay, good enough.
I think that's a good direction to look at, because it is, is a very small star of positiveness
Absolutely.
In choice for, at the middle and somewhat in the elementary level that we have. We don't want to abandon that, but let's take a look at it in light of exploring other options and other choices that we want to create for the, for the school district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, before you go, I just wanted to give your, one other point she had about the student-teacher ratio, which I'm afraid I wasn't able to read. If you could expound on your answer to her, I didn't
Sure. The question came up with, when you look at just straight numbers, you have two staff members, two teachers, with the thirty seven, or the twenty-seven students, which would equate to, looking like a 13.5. So it looks, it appears that it's high, but when you take into account that you have two teachers teaching three grade levels and four core areas, when you spread out those students within schools, we would still have to fund other teachers. So even though it appears that there's a large dollar amount, it would have, would have been added to other loads for teachers. So it appears that it's high, but what we're asking these teachers to do is a very difficult task. With the Common Core state standards coming down, when you have one teacher trying to teach two subjects at two different grade levels, there's really a lot of commitment to that. And while it may seem unfair that they only have thirteen students, when you think of the differentiation in the teaching that they have to do just to move these students, is very heavy.
Could some of that be satisfied if, if ALPS was larger?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
That's the goal. Fill, fill those rooms.
You'd have economies of scale if you had more students, and I'm not suggesting this by any means, but I would guess that if you had twenty-seven students, you could send those back to five middle schools, and they could be absorbed, and you wouldn't need to add staffing, I'm not suggesting that by any means. But for a parent of an elementary child in a kindergarten, first-grade classroom with twenty-seven children, this probably looks like a lot of staffing, because these children are older. And children, you know, from schools with high rates of free and reduced lunch, so high poverty schools with those numbers at those, those lower elementary grades, that's an issue. And it's an issue that boards have to face, because we only have so many resources, and all these kids are valuable. We all have a stake in how well each of these kids is educated, no matter if they're in ALPS or they're in a school with high free and reduced lunch rates, and twenty-seven in the classroom, and the teacher's struggling to teach first-grade reading.
So if we, if we approve a five-year contract renewal for ALPS, what are we going to be changing next year? How are we going to be able to change? Is this something that we really want to do?
Well, I think if you look in the contract, every year, it's reviewed annually, if we're going to continue. So maybe we set forward a step of, this year, we need to explore, what are the other options? Do we look at, is it possible to turn this to a magnet school? What else could we do for ALPS?
But it would be a five-year term before we then
Well, you have the option, every, you have the option every year to say, no, we wouldn't continue, that would be within that contract.
And the, and the staffing, how we staff it isn't necessarily governed by the, by the contract, so the alteration of a staffing that, we could have one staff person there who would be a miracle worker, who would deliver on all the programs, and we could still deliver it. It would potentially lose its focus because of what we'd be asking, but the reality is that the staffing is not tied to the, to the contract.
Having visited this program and enjoyed every visit, because of the learning that you can actually see taking place, the actual hands-on, active engagement of the students in their own learning with almost individualized documented learning plans is quite exciting. And the ability of the students to explain not only what they're doing, but why they're doing it, is very impressive, and ties in with the district mission statement of promoting critical and creative thinkers.
Was our commercial for the marketing, thank you, Barb.
And, and having spent time in the ALPS classrooms, the highly motivated individuals, having conversations with students when they're engaged in learning, it is absolute, the only issue that I see is really being able to deal better with recruitment and enrollment of students. Because the quality of the product being delivered and the excitement that is in, with every child that I visit with, quite a number of them, in four student sets at desks altogether. I was just, I've been totally impressed with what they're doing, how they can explain what they're doing, and why they're doing it, so.
I guess if we have the option to opt out any year, why is it a five-year contract, or how can it actually be a five-year contract? If we, if next year we could cancel it, then it's really only a one-year contract?
I would have to check, I believe with the state of Wisconsin, they run their cycles every five years. I would have to check, and I believe that's why they set it every five, and that's why, as a board, you have the option of every year when we complete our report, to take a look and say, since we're an instrumentality, are we still meeting the needs of the Oshkosh area school district, and do we want to continue? That's my interpretation at this point.
Other discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
Hi.
Dito, I, Alyson?
Hi.
Alyson, I, Nerner?
Hi.
Nerner, I, Virgil?
Hi.
Virgil, I, Lumbler?
Hi.
Lumbler, I, Seganek?
Hi.
Seganek, I, Weenhop?
Hi.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. That brings us to requests for future agenda items. Does anyone have anything that they would wish to add to future agendas? Mr. Dito?
At some point in the future, I would like to see, and this is based off of our experience with expulsions. I would like to see, right now, we have interventions that are set up, like with RTI, for special needs kids, and students with disabilities, and all the, all the problem and the unfortunate. But it seems to me, when we go through the expulsion process, that there's not really intervention that's set up. And you can kind of chart this, where you see grades start dropping, absenteeism increasing, all this other kind of stuff. And I've done some research on, in particular, the day, about three, three hours or so. And I would like to see maybe the discussion of like an early warning system, set up so that we're not losing kids primarily in ninth grade. Ninth grade is the, is the one grade where kids start to fail really bad. And if we lose them there, we've lost them pretty much. So if, if we can, what I've seen is like, some of these early warning systems have things that immediately, if absenteeism goes up, if tardism goes up, if grades are dropping, that there is a set thing that happens, set action for that. Like remedial action, individualized action, different alternative actions for classroom. I'd like to see a possibility of, and it doesn't have to be immediate, like next week, but it would be, it would be nice at some point in the future to have just an overview of that, what our options are for possibly looking forward with that. Because these expulsions we do, and quite frankly, we don't do a great deal of them, I mean, with 10,000 kids and, and whatever it was, six or eight expulsions last year. It's always an agonizing thing to go through those expulsion hearings, because everyone I've been on, all those children are bright, I mean, they're either proficient or advanced, and that really concerns me.
Can you go to Alex?
We, we would certainly, Kim may wish to step forward, but I think what we need to do is share with the board the interventions that already are occurring. They may be addressing those issues, and Kim can describe briefly pieces of that, but I think a report to the board that would outline the engagement that has taken place. And, and when the board receives an expulsion case, it is that this went from zero to
Expulsion.
Expulsion, there is a significant interjection in that process, and, and Kim and Andy can give you some sense of, of the pieces that kick into place from the monitoring of both grades and proficiency of students that are already in place. And you may ask for looking at more detail regarding it, and we can prepare that in the future. But to respond very appropriately to your question, I think we can begin that right now.
So we'll share some acronyms with you right away, because you know, it's all about acronyms. One of them is called DOES, and it's a new DPI, it's the dropout early warning system. And so when we go on to the DPI website, we can see the students, starting in ninth grade, where they are, and we sort of have it color-coded, you know, if they're yellow, red, green, and where they are, and where, what we need to do then with them. Is, we have things in place in the high school, which Andy's here, he's going to explain a little bit about DASH, I believe, and then some other things that happen at that level.
There are other things, again, that we do, we are constantly monitoring, but students are not doing well, we monitor their attendance, we have, again, policies and procedures for those things as well. So, we do have some innovative programs that we're trying, and we are having success with, again, the DASH program, is an attempt to pre-teach the child right away, instead of when the child fails a class, let's not wait a year, and then come back to them and say, okay, now we need to repeat this class, let's, let's do it right now, that, at that break. And, and North, I know, specifically has a whole school plan that they're diving into this very topic, that I'm sure we can prepare a report for you. The other thing that I would like to respond to is that, again, as a board, you, you, when you receive, we have to get to this process, and it is, there are two things as a, as an educator you have to do, and both of them, or as administrator, one is expelling a student, the other is releasing a teacher. And both of them involve the same thing, where we have to admit the system didn't make a difference. And, and that's by, sometimes by choice. I guess what I'm driving at, Steve, is to say, there are many steps before we get to that final straw. Schools use progressive discipline, where we start out, and they'll do those things, they'll, they'll do interventions, they'll do grade checks, all the things that you want to know about. Then they'll do suspensions, and then they'll do contracts before they even get here, and then the, one of the final, as I'm the gatekeeper for all of those, before anything comes to you, it comes through my office, is then, many times, we do a pre- expulsion, and you've seen some of those documents come from me as well, and others that have sat in my chair. That is another attempt before bringing it to you, and that when we finally bring it to you, all of these steps have been exhausted, and even then, you've seen in our recommendations, we're still not willing to, to, we'll, we'll do whatever it takes, again, with, with, you know, students to get to that graduation point and do what we can. But we do, again, as you pointed out so eloquently, you know, when we look at the statistical numbers we deal with, of the number of students we have, and the half a dozen we bring, you know, it's less than .001 percent of the clientele we're dealing with. Everyone is important, don't get me wrong, but just so you know, the steps that happen before it even, before it even gets to you.
Perhaps, um, let me, let me rephrase this, it would be a great benefit for, in my case, and I'm sure the rest of the board who sits on these expulsion hearings would feel somewhat the same, or it would be nice to see those interventions within the expulsion policies, because yes, you do have the pre- expulsion always, that's always included in the document. We always have the document, within the document, the WKCE testing, which tells you that this kid's brilliant, and then you've got you see that where the grades start dropping off, but there is nothing indicative there of what was done from our
Correct, that makes complete sense, and that is something we've been talking about as part of the RTI process, is to start talking about, and it, it should be, you know, we have like PBIS going on in several of our schools, not all of them have been trained yet, but that's another area that we're now monitoring, what are the majors, what is the motivation, and what is it that we're doing to help this child? And it's all about reteaching and helping support, you know, positive behaviors. So we have that in place, and then of course, academic interventions, that's something we're talking about, is how can we respond to that better? As far as, I mean, we all have records on it, but I don't think we have a central place yet, but we're looking at infinite campus and what we can explore there as we go further.
I'm very excited about the whole infinite campus thing. I mean, last year, now, we have a full year of data in on our expulsions, and, all right, so we put some child into an alternative program, or an online course, strictly online course, did they graduate? I would like to know that data, because if, if we're consistently putting kids into situations where they're not succeeding, then perhaps we need to review that. And, and I guess for myself, I would like to see the, from beginning to end here at some point, I'm where it is.
And again, if I may just finish this thought, all of these, these cases, we think very long and hard, and look at all options before, again, before they even come to you. We, you can rest assured, we've explored almost all of them, and sometimes we're asking you questions to say, you know, what would you like to, for us to do, hence our recommendations. But we also have to understand, sometimes there's just some things we can't control. And, and, and sometimes people do things that we can't predict, and that can come from any part of the population, be it a straight A student, or a student in the middle, or anyplace. There's just some things that, if they become in danger to others, and the school feels it, deems to change that environment, we need to, we just can't control that.
What we gleaned is really two points from this, is one, I'm taking a look at future, and it's too late for
Tomorrow.
There's one for tomorrow. But to enhance the background material for the board to align the interventions, but I also think it's, it's subject for a future board report on our first meetings of the month, to kind of outline what processes are involved with it. So there'll be two-step responses, one beyond the one that is, is on the docket for tomorrow, but that we will add to that packet, so that you have a much deeper background of what interventions were done from when, when, at the beginning, when we started to see that curve line go down regarding either attendance, or academics, or performance, or the volume going up on behavioral interventions. Because those, those cross, intersect at varying times very closely, that if you, if you graph those, you very clearly see the connection of one offsetting the other.
Can you also include in that report the, the history of at least the one year that we've been tracking, is there any chance we can
We can work on, following up on those students, that last year, as I recall, I believe we had seven.
We had one?
It's, yeah.
No longer with us.
Yeah, and, and so those would be all, those cases.
And for the 24-hour answer, as in, you know, in the near future, what cases you may have, you may feel free, and you should exercise your right as board members
To ask.
To ask any question, that's why all of the, you know, so many administrators show up, that we can answer those questions, so you can make a fully educated decision. So I, even if, it's for the immediate, feel free to ask any question.
Like in tomorrow's.
That's, that's appreciated.
In the near future, yes.
I mean, to me, this, I see this as part of a fit, as a strategic plan, because of the
It is.
Increase in data that you're supposed to be having to make decisions on. Dr. Hertzog, actually, yesterday at the expulsion, really kind of piqued my interest, asked some good questions on this, and I started looking through there, and kind of was like, why aren't, I know you guys are doing something, and then I'm going through the policies, and I see more guys are doing something, and then I'm going through the policies and I see more, there's all kinds of policies about what to do after the child is here, but there was not really anything in policy on what to do prior to the child getting there.
Yeah, and back, back, and sometimes we can predict this with a high degree of accuracy, and at other times we can't.
But we can certainly do a follow-up for you.
We can certainly look into it. I think it's interesting questions.
Share what's going on and where we're going.
I know what RTI means.
Say that again?
I say, I know what RTI means.
Any other questions we can answer for you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other requests for future agenda items?
Barb? Actually, I think it would be an expansion of the short-range item for October 9th, which Mr. Nault would be leading the charge on. This particular item calls for information since Act 10, which I think was passed in early 2011. Is, is that correct? I'd like to see data going back to 2008. I don't think two years is enough to, to show a trend. And that's what people like Dr. Lumberger, who know research better than I, would probably support, that two, two years of data is really not a trend. You need more like four to five to really look at what's going on. So I guess I'm asking Mr. Nault's office to do a little bit more work and dig deeper and look at resignations between 2008 up to the present as part of that report.
We will attempt to do that. We may need to, as a result of that, in looking at the timeframe between then and that report.
I appreciate that.
Delay the report being presented.
We'll see what we can do. It's, it's going to be a matter of how, how can we retrieve the data, go back that far? Hopefully we can. If we can, we'll have that ready for you. For summer of, the higher season of 2011, 2012, 2013, just about there.
Okay.
2013, with the exit, question errors, telephone calls. We should have some good data about into why people left us also. But it's, it's, I know it's pretty good stuff, so, but we'll see what we can, go back to what we were...
Thank you.
Other requests for future agenda items? All right, seeing none, on to announcements. Steve, I didn't know if you wanted to give a plug for the sailing program, the clip that you sent us?
Well, yeah, I didn't know if we had ended on showing that. I really just wanted to share our Channel 5 coverage of the sailing program. And actually, teeing it up as a plug for the program, not so much as a plug for the experience, and especially the experience with our staff and students. I'll be brief, but we just wrapped up last Friday with our fall session of sailing days, and we had five schools, two out of district and three in the district. And six years on, I have to share that, well, my email to, to one, and I, how do you pick one staff member, one school, to a person, to an administrator, to a teacher, to a student. Stellar courage, competency, kindness, politeness, attentiveness to instruction. It was, it was a moving experience across the board, and others in our volunteer corps and on our board of directors commented as well that, I, I emailed to one teacher that the best part of this whole program might be being shoulder-to-shoulder with our teaching staff. They were just beyond measure, and I simply had to share that because it was just a moving experience.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention, Oshkosh for Education had its annual meeting, and I wanted to thank everyone for their support. There's a lot of people coming out to help us out, and it's greatly appreciated. Any further items for announcements? Take a motion to adjourn. Should I get? Call the roll?
Alyson?
Aye.
Alyson, aye.
Aye.
Nerner?
Aye.
Rizal?
Aye.
Rizal, aye.
Aye.
Rizal, aye.
Aye.
Segunek?
Aye.
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 Please stand adjourned.